We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole, Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities meeting, and I see we have a quorum, so we will continue. Before we move on to item number two, there's just a couple of things I'd like to mention before the approval of the agenda. Tonight, we have a presentation by two people. One is the Health Unit and one is Mr. Wayne Porter. And I understand that the Health Unit may need a couple of extra minutes time, other than the 15 minutes that is normally allotted. So I just want to make council aware of that. It may go over just a few minutes. And also Deputy Mayor Deschamps will not be with us tonight. His wife is ill. And also, there is a new item on your desk, and it's a discussion item, and it'll be number 6C, and it's, the topic is rural and northern fund application update. Now, could I have a approval of the agenda, please?
Approval as amended.
As amended, thank you.
So moved.
I have a mover. Do I have a second here? Mr. Parker, Mr. Mayor, thank you. All in paper? Carry. Okay. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the nature, general nature thereof. Do we have any, any, no disclosures, thank you. Now, business arising from the previous committee meeting of the whole, Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities meeting, if any. I have, I have a couple of items, but I'll search the table first. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
One small correction on page five of nine, just a peanut thing. But page five of nine, item number two, at the top of the page, the end of the first sentence, it should say that the reports be forwarded to the council meeting on March the 25th for, I think the F is missed, peanut thing, just a correction.
Mr. Woods, is that in? Thank you. Anything, anyone else? Okay. I, I just have a couple. The first one, first one is item 5A, delegations and presentation. I just wanted to see, is anyone going to take part at the council table in that run on, on the date for Fort Town? I believe Deputy Mayor Deschamps will be running in that. And the next one I have is under South Nation Conservation Authority. It says that the 2018 report will be presented next week, then circulated to the municipalities. Have we received that report yet?
We have, yes.
Thank, thank you. And the next one I have is on the Johnstown ATV Club. Has that, has that work regarding the swamp mats, has it been finished, do we know?
Through, through the chair, I'm not sure if the work has been completed. I know that the agreement has been signed and executed, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the work has been completed.
Good, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I had breakfast with the President Saturday morning, and it's all been completed.
It is, okay. Thank you, thank you, councillor.
If I may, Mr. Chair, one other comment with respect to Fort Town Night Run, and in addition to Deputy Mayor Deschamps' participation, the township staff is putting it in team.
Oh, wonderful, terrific. I might have to go up and cheer.
Are you leading?
Oh, I don't think so. I'm old, I'm taking a career, that's my point.
You're the water, the water girl. And I believe that, oh yes, under, under item, which one is it? It's under Municipal Class EA, New Sewage Works, that will be covered tonight, under, under 6A. That was brought forward by Mr. Gillebaugh at the top. And that's, that's all I have on that. Now, do we, do we need a motion to carry these down? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our delegations and presentations. And for the Health Unit tonight, I believe we have Jane and Catherine making our relegation.
Thanks for having us. I'm Jane Hess, I'm the Director of Healthy Living and Development at the Health Unit. And I'm here, in essence, representing Dr. Paula Stewart, our Medical Officer of Health. And we want to present to you tonight our strategic plan, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the community safety and wellbeing planning, because we've been involved with that for Brockville and Ganonokway, so just kind of giving you a little information on how we might be able to support your municipality in that, yeah, thing you have to deal as well. So we did forward you the strategic plan ahead of time, and hopefully you had time to look at it. Given that we have 15, maybe 20 minutes total, I can't go through it page by page, probably what I'll do is just kind of highlight some of the, kind of the key points for us that you might be interested in. So when you, I think the first thing I want to talk about is just the role of public health, and I think many of you already do know that. But it's to look at the health of the population, looking at its, assessing that, its needs, its assets. We want to prevent health problems, disease and injury. We want to promote a healthy, health and healthy communities, and we want to protect from our community from infectious diseases and environmental hazards. So there's been a lot of information lately in the media about measles outbreaks, and so that's certainly one of the areas that we work in, is infection, immunization, and trying to keep our immunizations up. So herd immunity is 90 to 95 percent of our population being immunized for the diseases that there is immunization available for. We're not there yet, but we continue to try to get there. So we look at things, if you can see on the, on the left, we look at things at the individual level with knowledge, skills and attitudes, and then we work up to society and public safe public policy. So when you think about community and public policy, that's where our work with you, and that's a good segue into what Catherine's going to talk about in her role as your municipal public health nurse. Our mission, vision and values, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but we want everyone to have opportunities to be healthy. You might know, but we can't, we aren't saying everyone is healthy, because that's not something we can guarantee, but within the frame of what's there normal, we want them to be as healthy as possible, so to have those opportunities. We also have a companion strategic plan for organizational excellence, which we didn't forward to you, but it's for us as an organization. So we do have that. These are available on our website too, for anyone that may be interested in looking at them. One of our, when you look at how we've set up our strategic plan for this year, one of our big issues is the whole concept of health equity. And this goes back to my comment about everyone has the opportunity to be healthy, so to realize their potential, and that the community responds effectively to determinants of health. So determinants of health are all those living conditions that people are in. So a lot of things we do in public health don't necessarily relate to healthcare, like you think about from your doctor or your hospital. It thinks about how people live, work, play, and those kinds of things. And we do have a list of the determinants of health of health here. So a lot of those are things I don't think that you would find surprising, childhood experiences, are the education and their literacy level, which all impacts on their ability to have a job and make money, and then can afford good food and good housing, and then their personal health practices. We also talk about social inclusion, social support network, networks, and then sexual orientation and attraction. New in our determinants of health this year in the work we're doing from the Ontario Public Health Standards is the concept of Indigenous peoples' experiences, so that we, that's kind of a new, it's, it's not new for our community, we know that, but it's something we have to do more work on, and so we've included it, and we're working forward on that. So we'll be looking for all sorts of community partners in that as well. Our strategies, they are the same strategies throughout many of the things we're looking at. Education, partnering with communities, partnering with individual service providers, municipalities, using the literature to assess, monitor, advocate and report on health equity trends, and develop a framework for our work with Indigenous communities and populations. Healthy infants and children, and as you noticed, early child development was one of the determinants of health. So healthy infants and children is very important, because if kids have a good early childhood experience, they, they do, they do better in life moving forward. Mayor Seaw said he used to be an elementary school principal, so I certainly, he could probably tell you stories about that, and how that can impact on their kids moving forward through the school system. We want to work with pregnant women, we want babies to be born at a healthy date, babies to sleep safely, we want them to be well attached, have good developmental outcomes, sorry, pardon me. We want their families to have a good nurturing environment for them. We want them to be physically active, live at sedentary and screen time, and certainly as a municipality, you play a big role in that with your recreation and those kinds of things. And then we want them to have access to safe and healthy food, have the food they need and want to meet their nutritional needs. Many of the strategies are the same, so I won't go over that. Healthy youth, we also spend a lot of time with youth and working with youth serving agencies in Leeds Grand Hall and Lanark. We want youth to have an opportunity to develop mind, body and spirit, have skills and relationships to thrive, be healthy, and we want them to become engaged young adults in the community, because that's who pays the taxes. And that's who's going to take, pay the taxes when us old people are, you know, not in the working world anymore. So it's very important that we support them in that transition. We didn't describe youth as an age, as you can see, we looked at it as a time of transition from the being dependent in early, in childhood, to the adulthood independent. So somewhere in there, and you know from different people that you know, some are youth for longer than others.
That's a euphemism.
I'm a 28-year-old living at home, so. She's fully employed and teaching, but, you know, she is still living at home. So you never know with that youth, population goals. We want kids to have, or youth to have one, at least one positive relationship with a healthy adult in their lives. We want them to have good relationships with peers, we want them to be physically active, eat, sleep, and we know that screens, and I'm sure that those of you who have teenagers know, that screen time's a challenge, and sleep is a, is an issue with screen time, because they're at night, you know, it's kind of who's, who's, you know, Instagramming me or Facebooking or whatever they do. We want them to be resilient and cope with life's challenges, we want them to be confident in their sexual orientation and attraction, and that all goes to making healthy decisions about all sorts of things, and substance abuse and other risk-taking, or particular ones we're interested in. Key strategies, again, similar strategies, I won't go into those. Healthy communities. So basically, a healthy community is, we want individuals and families in a healthy vibrant community that's in a natural environment or the public realm. So the natural environment is all the great outdoors. The public realm, and we describe that as publicly owned places and spaces that are accessible to everyone. So certainly, a lot of the work that you do as a municipality is related to healthy communities and that kind of public and natural realm. We have environmental goals, we want our municipalities to be engaged in creating healthy and supportive environments, we want to support municipalities in being designated as a healthy community, looking at transportation modes, healthy food and beverage, beverage choices, so that's, talk about your, you know, your rinks, your arenas, your public spaces in Edwardsburg, Cardinal. Safe drinking water, safe food, you know, I, I know we do inspect the Spencerville Fair, which is one of those kind of keynote things that everyone has to go to every year, make sure the food and all those things are safe. And that the public is knowledgeable about strategies to adapt to climate change, so we do, we do approach that as well. I want to talk about that. Infectious diseases, families are protected, individuals, families, communities are protected by infectious diseases of public health importance. So certainly, the person-to-person ones, like measles, influenza, the animal-to-person ones, like rabies, or the vector ones, like Lyme disease, and then water, food and water borne illnesses, like salmonella and other food poisons. So we want people to have the knowledge and skills to prevent those diseases. We want all people in this community, not just children in schools, to have up-to-date immunization, and adult immunization is equally as important. And so there are probably a few of you in the room that might need your adult immunizations updated, so give us a call. We want people to have fewer infectious diseases, sexually transmitted diseases, we want that to go down. We want to decrease the number of diseases spread by ticks and mosquitoes and food and water. We look at childcare settings, long-term care, retirement homes and personal service settings, to prevent the spread of the infectious diseases, and out-of-hospital healthcare and dental settings. So we make sure that they can, they can control for that. We now have a new program, a new requirement in Ontario, that if you go to your dentist and you don't think they wash their hands well, or clean their equipment right, or that you thought maybe they used something on you that they used on someone else, you can send that concern to us at the Health Unit, and we must investigate within 24 hours. And that's something new. New, new program, no new funding, big job though, and, you know, certainly, I think so far, most of our complaints have been personal service settings, but there have been in some other jurisdictions, like Ottawa and Kingston, some have been dental and other offices of medical professionals. And our goal is there to teach and to get things, you know, cleaned up, and so that it's safe then for people who come into the center. Working with community partners, et cetera. And basically, when we did this plan, it reflected the ongoing engagement with our community to plan and implement programs. Community engagement is how we do our work, we don't do it in isolation, and we do it with, as I said, many partners who aren't considered non-health partners, non-traditional partners. So that was a very quick go-through, and if you have any questions, I will take them.
Where is your, your offices located?
We have offices in Kempville at the hospital, so it's located at the end of the hospital, Brockville, Ganonokway, Perth, Spis Falls and Almont. Our offices in Brockville and Spis Falls are open five days a week to the public, and Kempville is three days a week, Gan and Almont are two days a week, Perth is one day a week. And, but we do provide the same services to the communities out of those offices five days a week.
Correct. And your office in Brockville is on Loyer, isn't it?
Is on, yeah, 458 Loyer in Old North.
Okay, thank you.
So with the measles and stuff that have kind of broken out recently, my son, for one, has just completed cancer treatment, so his immunizations aren't up to snuff, and he's going to be a while before he can, he's able to get. How is that information being relayed to the community if there is a measles outbreak?
Measles outbreak?
Yeah.
So basically, with children like your son are the exact reason why we want herd immunity, because we know that there are people in the population, for one reason or another, that can't be immunized right now, and he's one of them. So that's why we want that herd immunity. What happens in the case of an outbreak is, so there's a measles case, we haven't had one in our area, there's a measles case, and then we go on what's called Panorama, which is a provincial database, and we went to Panorama, and we can look up by school who's had that immunization and who's up to date. Kids that don't, we don't have evidence of the fact that they have that immunization, are then asked to stay off, stay away from school until that, they bring us that immunization data. Ninety, no, I won't say 99%, but a lot of the time, the immunization data just hasn't gotten to us. Parents get them done at their primary care physician, and they don't realize that it's them that has to take it to the Health Unit. There isn't a system in the place to get it to the Health Unit. It was supposed to be, have been one come into place July 1st, but this new Ontario government changed the rule, because physicians were going to have to upload their immunization data into Panorama, but that, you know, the OMA basically got to the government, and they said they couldn't, didn't have the time to do that. So that's how we would handle that, so we, so if a kid didn't have that immunization data, we would give them a, you know, a short period of time to get that to us, and most of those kids probably do have it. One of the, the CDC, the Centre for Disease Control in Atlanta, says one of our biggest risks for health in the next, you know, kind of, you know, generation, I guess, is the anti-vax, and people that, you know, are choosing not to vaccinate their children because of their fear of that. Your son fits into the category of a medical exemption, and, and, you know, those are acceptable, and we, you know, we honor those, no problem. People can have conscientious objections too, as well. So I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, it was, it was nice knowing that if there is information out there, that it's going to be relayed to whoever needs to relate to.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, without relay, it won't be on an individual, personal basis, though.
No, but, but it will to the school, and so then those, those kids within the school that don't have their immunization data up to date will be contacted. So we won't tell a school, well, we do actually give a list to the school who's, who's not immunized, et cetera, but that's, you know, kind of, we're, from a privacy perspective, we're allowed to share that information with the school, but the school's not allowed to share that information with the parent.
What they have done, in case it did happen shortly after them went back to school in January, early February, was we got a call indicating that one child had something, I don't know what it was now, but they recommended that we stay home from, keep them home from school for a couple of days, because, because they didn't know if this was a transmittable issue. So that's one, I guess, a little block, but one thing that we have in place for us is that they have, they have notified us, they just want to make sure that that continues on.
This program, do we have to have a family doctor?
For?
Any of this, like say for the young youth, if we need your services, they don't?
For youth, no, youth, and I, depends on what you want, you know, we, we work with our youth serving organizations, like Children's Mental Health, Family and Child Services, work on programming with them, do programs in Brockville, you've probably heard of Stingers, we work with Connect Youth in Prescott, and we work with the Child and Youth Mental Health Hub in Kempville. So we work to support those youth to get what they need, and they don't need, and most of those are non-referrals, they don't need a referral from a family doctor. If a, if a, you know, a 13-year-old decides that they want, you know, they want to be sexually active and need birth control pills, they can come to the clinic and it's confidential information, they don't have to have a family physician to do that.
Any cost?
We do have a low, our birth control pills, for instance, are low cost, based on ability to pay.
Right. Different subjects, but I mean, overall, is there any cost, like, say you saying that you would work with the youth on, on different things besides the sexual things, is there, there's no cost at all?
No, no, that, that money, yeah. Well, we don't, no, we don't, we don't charge OHAB for most of the services that we do, where they're covered under our public health budget, which is 75% paid by the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, and 25% paid by the municipality. So you have a, a payment amount toward us in your tax dollars.
Thank you. So, any other, any other, go ahead.
So I have a comment for me, through the chair. So first, a comment. I notice now on the different restaurants, they're posting a thing outside that refers to the fact that they have been inspected, and there's a barcode, and apparently you can, my cell phone can access the barcode, and then that will give me a direct line to the Health Unit, and I can ask, when was the last time that particular restaurant was inspected? I understand that. That's a new program, to see those stickers.
Yeah, it's called Insight.
Okay.
And so you could actually even just Google our, our website, and go to Insight, and pull up Insight, and then go to the restaurant you want to go to tonight for dinner.
Okay. But my question is this, if I'm walking in the door of the restaurant, and that sticker is not there, does that tell me that that restaurant either has not been inspected, or that it failed the inspection? What does the absence of a sticker mean?
I have to, I'll have to double-check with that, but I can get back to you with that. I suspect it means that the restaurant has been inspected and the sticker's not up yet. It doesn't mean that it's not. Our restaurants are inspected on a, there's a routine inspection based on whether they're a medium, high or low risk, kind of establishment, and so because the insight and the postings of those are fairly new, we may not have gotten all of them up yet and inspected.
So what is the, the remedy, if you go into a restaurant kitchen, and it absolutely fails the cleanliness standard?
Well, I think if you went onto Insight, you would see, you know, it could be, there would be things they have to approve for the next visit, whenever the health inspector would come back, and there would be a timeline on that. I don't know what the exact timeline would be. I don't, I do know that there are restaurants that are actually shut and closed down, if there's an issue, that is going to take longer. For instance, if you get into a situation with pests, sometimes you have to spray, and so you have to close your restaurant for that period of time, basically, on a life cycle of those pests.
Do you have the power to close the doors?
Yes, you do. Yes, we do. I don't, but our health inspectors do, and our Medical Officer of Health has that power.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Yeah.
And do you exercise that power?
Yes, they do. Yes, we do. I had one close there over Christmas that I know of, but I won't tell you which one it was.
No, no. So then, if I may, a couple of other questions. When you went, we're talking about health equity there, and you were talking about having the opportunities, I think that was the word you used, everyone has opportunities to be healthy. Where's the onus here? Do you put the onus on the individual, or do you accept the responsibility as a societal responsibility?
I think the onus is on the individual, but...
You put it there.
But, you know, as a society, we have to make things, we have to make health easy, an easy choice. So if, you know, if, say someone is living on social assistance, and they have to make a choice between eating, you know, the appropriate amount of food, or the right thing, or paying their rent. You know, if we had, as a society, more subsidized housing, then maybe that person on social assistance could then put more of their money towards food and eat better. So I think it's, I think it's a combined responsibility. It's not, I, I don't, I don't, on an individual basis, say to someone, I'm responsible for your health, but I think as a society, when we look at what a society needs to be healthy and support its citizens, we all have some responsibility there. And certainly, you as, as councillors and representatives of your municipality have that as well. But, you know, so we can provide good choices for people to make, but it's up to them to make those choices, but as a society, we'd like to have those things there for them to make those good choices. And we know that lots of people, even in, even with opportunities for good health, sometimes don't make those choices. You know, certainly, you know, it's substance abuse, which isn't necessarily a choice thing, but how they eat and drink, and, you know, all sorts of other things. I don't know, can I, do that, that's Elaine's area.
One last question, if I may. On the, on one of the slides, you talked about healthy infants and children.
Yes.
So I know that previously, a Health Unit with which I was pretty closely aligned, had a program where every prenatal mother was visited. Does that program exist in the Lanark-Leeds and Granville Health Unit? Is every prenatal mother visited?
No, but we have a program called Healthy Babies, Healthy Children, where every new mother within Leeds Grand Hall and Granville, and we're still able to do it financially, although some of the bigger cities aren't, because it's a provincial program. Every new mother is called within 48 hours, called or contacted within 48 hours of having her baby, and offered support. Support for breastfeeding, support for home visit. Families where there's a risk, and they're of, you know, the social determinants of health thing, or like a teen mom, or those kinds of things, we often do visit those mums prenatally, and then right through, with our Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program. Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program has a, has two components. One is public health nurse visiting, and the other is a family home visitor. So the goals are to help kids meet their growth and development milestones, and to help parents help parent effectively. And so a lot of what the home visitor does is working with, with parents on parenting, whereas the public health nurse does the health kinds of things, like keeping their organization up to date, and infant feeding, and support with breastfeeding, and those kinds of things. So although we don't have, visit every prenatal woman, we do have prenatal classes available, and we encourage families to sign up for that. We do it online, and so we have codes that people can have free access to, and we also do in, in, in face, you know, face-to-face prenatal classes as well. So we do have contact with every new mother within 48 hours of delivery.
Good. So, any other, any other questions? Yes, John?
I just have one. Our new Canada Food Guide, just, you're talking about equality and ability for being health, but still, then, our Leeds Grand Hall and Granville position on the new...
Elaine is our, you know, our, she has, she's our...
You're talking about equality here, and it's really, the new Canada Food Guide, in my mind, is a very expensive line to try to get your protein and stuff from compared to what we were talking.
It is a little bit different than the old Food Guide, in that it's not as prescriptive. So, and it does focus on the plant-based protein, which can be more expensive, but it's still a matter of choice. So there, basically, the new Food Guide gives you lots of choice, while suggesting that you do focus, have your plate on vegetables and... So there, basically the new Food Guide gives you lots of choice while suggesting that you do focus half your plate on vegetables and fruit. So, the traditional protein is still there, but it does emphasize the vegetable choices, which depending on the season can be more expensive.
So are you emphasizing this in your talk with young parents and stuff, that this isn't something of the, they can still get their protein and still can be a healthy diet and not?
Absolutely, there's still enough choice in there that you can fit it into a lot of different budgets and we have lots of resources on eating on a budget, so, yes.
So, do I have two more minutes for, I know we're kind of over, do you want me to talk about community safety and wellbeing, or do you want me to come back on that?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, at the county level, CIOs have been discussing this and we're aware of the health units work with Ganinacway. Um, and I know the CIO from Ganinacway was going to approach the health unit to see if those folks would be able to help us with our community safety plan on a county-wide level. So, not that we don't want to hear from you, but, but there'd be another opportunity.
Another opportunity.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Correct.
Okay, I'll leave it to Catherine then, sorry I took so long.
That's fine.
Very good.
Come on up, Catherine.
Hello, everyone, thank you very much for having me this evening. Um, my name is Catherine Allright and I'm a registered nurse and public health nurse at, at the health unit. And, um, I work on our Healthy People by Bright Communities team. So Elaine is, uh, my manager and Jane is the director of overseeing that program as well. Um, and today I hope to sort of explain my role a little bit and, um, give some sort of tangible, practical, um, explanations and examples of how the health unit and the municipality, uh, they work together and give some examples of how we already are, are working together as well. Um, to give you a little bit of a, of a background on me, so I, I do sit in the Kempville office and was previously working at the Ganinacway office. Um, as a municipal liaison nurse, I am assigned, um, to work with you folks in Edwardsburg Cardinal, um, but also just support surrounding municipalities, so that's the township. I'm also assigned to be working with North Granville and Merrickville, Wolfherd. And I also work really closely, um, with the, the team, so the other municipal nurses. So, for example, some of you in the past may have had interactions with Jennifer LaBelle, another public health nurse. Um, and she's assigned to some of your neighboring communities like Tanner Prescott and Brockville. So we'll be making sure to work really closely together because we know that municipalities, uh, work together as well. All right, um, so as part of my, uh, presentation, I just wanted to highlight, um, some, the common vision that we do have between municipalities and public health units. And really that's to have a healthy community for our folks to live, work, um, and play. And, um, this common vision is reflected in, in a lot of, um, documents that inform the work that we're, that we do. For, so for example, we have the Ontario Public Health Standards, which mandates what public health units across Ontario are supposed to be working on. And throughout several points in this document, it sort of guides us to work with our municipalities as partners on, um, strategies such as, um, uh, chronic disease prevention, injury prevention, um, climate change, emergency preparedness, several, um, different topics. Um, as well, we know the Municipal Act refers to local service boards and recognizes, um, health unit boards as, um, an example of those service boards. Um, and as Jane was speaking too, um, she was chatting about our health unit strategic plan, which, um, you saw one of those pillars in there was working, um, striving towards healthy communities. And we, of course, recognize the municipality as a strong partner in that. Um, as well, and just looking at some of your own, um, documents as a municipality, it's really clear like you folks are all focused on, um, having a healthy place where your residents and visitors can thrive. Um, for example, in your recreation programs and as well as, um, in your new, um, official plan that you've been working on, it's definitely also represented there, um, too. So, um, dive a little bit more into my role and, and how I can be, um, supporting, um, you and Edwardsburg Cardinal. So I can support the work you are doing to create healthy communities. So, um, what that might look like is assisting with the literature review and trying to bring the health lens and, um, health evidence to, to the work that you're doing here to help inform that work. So for example, I just referenced the official plan that you've been working on. I know, um, some of our staff, um, have provided some feedback and suggestions to bring that health, health lens to your official plan. Um, as well, we can support funding applications, provide letters of support, um, and so forth. And then the next one there is helping to navigate the health units' resources and services. So, um, if you have any questions related to any of the mandates or roles of public health or have a question for us that you think we could help to answer, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Um, and if I can't answer it, I'm happy to help navigate who the appropriate staff person is at, at the health unit to talk to. So for example, if you're working on, um, any bylaws, for example, like your smoking, alcohol bylaws. I know the, the smoking bylaws on the agenda later today and that you've been in contact, um, with, uh, our enforcement officer. Um, so that's great. Um, and if you do have those existing contacts, I would encourage you to continue reaching out to those folks, um, directly as well. Providing evidence and best practices, um, so if you're working on things like affordable housing, active transportation, um, we can, are definitely willing and eager to, to be at those tables to, um, support literature reviews and bring that best practice to the forefront. And collaborating on sharing information to the public, so some examples of what that has looked like in the past. Um, is working on media releases, making sure, uh, the public is aware of information. For example, we were just talking about measles outbreaks, if there was one in our community, I'm sure a media release of some kind would be, would be going out to the community at large too, to make sure, um, that they're aware. Um, in the past as well, we've also worked with municipalities on informing the public about the opioids crisis, for example, and hosting public information, NICS is something we, we've done as well. Um, partnering on social media camp, campaigns, um, communication strategies is definitely something we can support and, and be engaged in. So some additional, um, examples for collaboration between health units and municipalities, um, some municipal plan reviews. So we've already highlighted, uh, the work we've done together on our official plan. Um, if you're working on strategic plans, uh, recreation and cultural plans, we can definitely, um, provide support with those. Um, transportation, if you're looking at having a transportation community or an active transportation community, or one already exists, um, we'd be happy to be engaged in that work. Um, walking school bus projects, we've supported communities in, um, applying for our funding and to, to really increase, um, walking, cycling, um, to school and improving the infrastructure, um, around, um, schools as well to enable an environment where that's possible. We definitely support that work. Um, substance use prevention and harm reduction. So, uh, we have, uh, worked in the past with Edwardsburg Cardinal with the South Granville Municipal Drug Strategy. Um, we can definitely continue, um, just to support that work. Um, smoking bylaws, as we, we know that's on the agenda today and we're already, um, pretty engaged with you already on that. Um, as well, I, I did see that you have, um, a municipal alcohol policy and if, when that comes up for revision, we'd be happy, um, to support that one too. Um, when we look at, uh, recreation, uh, of course, we can support funding applications and, um, link, hopefully link you to other communities that, um, that might be of ideas and support networking and that sort of thing. Um, healthy food and environment, so making sure that our food, air, water, um, is safe and that we're, um, supporting, um, that action on climate change. And then the last point there is health equity, which, um, Jane provided you with an overview of the social determinants of health. And so some examples of what we've been doing just for other communities of being engaged in our work on, um, affordable housing, uh, making sure folks have access, um, to food, um, and that, that type of work. Um, so the, uh, I suppose my ask here at this, at this meeting is I, I would like to learn, uh, more, um, about Edwardsburg Cardinal and, um, how we can better serve you as a health unit. Um, so if you have any recommendations for me on who might be a good contact within the municipality to maybe sit down with and, um, to chat about any existing proj, projects or initiatives, um, you may have and how the health unit can support you with that, I would love, um, that opportunity and step. And I'm happy to take any, any questions, um, for me that you may have.
So I've just, I've just added your name because you're the contact and I've got it off here.
That's great.
Uh, but I mean, from the point of view, who do you contact? I mean, obviously you've been talking to our staff, so that's going to be your first line of contact unless you feel that there's some way that the elected officials can be involved. But we're here as a governing body. My main interest as a member of the governing body is to, um, urge that you exercise on your mandate. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm fairly close to Mayor Malanca, who's now the Chair of the Board, and he knows that I constantly bring up the issue of immunization rates. I constantly bring up the issue of public health, uh, through the restaurant, restaurant inspection program, that kind of thing. Uh, because I think that that's where you have the greatest effect, to have the biggest boost to healthy environments.
Right.
Uh, I think that at some times, you tend to get outside your mandate. And I'm not at all shy to tell Mayor Malanca that at county council. I think when you get outside your mandate, talking about climate change and talking about guaranteed incomes, I think you sort of diverge from, I, I, I'm going to call it, the more mundane aspects of your mandate, which are really closer to the ground. You remember that I asked the previous speaker about visits, prenatal visits. Uh, I think we can all agree that if there are a hundred children born in a month, that probably the at-risk portion of that group is maybe ten percent at the most. Ninety percent of those babies born will be born into families that are well-capable of raising them and providing the healthy, uh, environment that they need. Ten percent will definitely be at risk. It's those ten percent that I focus on. And that's where I look, or, and that's why I asked the question. Do they get the prenatal visit? Do they get the follow-up? And I was satisfied with the answer, but opportunities like this present themselves very fre, not so frequently. And it's, I appreciate you coming and, and indicating an interest to work clo, more closely with us.
I'd just like to, uh, one thing on, uh, substance use prevention and harm redu, uh, reduction. Would you be interested in, like, uh, coming to a youth group and, and, uh, talking to the youths about this?
Um, something we, we definitely support is youth engagement at the health unit. Um, and, um, I know for, for example, a health promoter at the health unit who works specifically in our tobacco program runs vaping workshops with youth to make sure, um, that they have the information and then works with them to spread that information on the harms and risks, um, of vaping and e-cigarettes and to work on their critical thinking skills and media literacy. So, um, I think what might be a first step in working, um, with the youth on, on something like substance use prevention is really trying to figure out maybe what is needed, um, at that youth group. Um, and to go from there, whether that vaping workshop will be the right fit or, um, to see if it would end up going in another direction just based on their needs. So doing an assessment first and then going forwards. But the vaping and e-cigarettes is a, is a good example because we know from, um, Ontario Student Drug Use and Health Survey data, um, that the use of those devices is really, um, on the rise amongst our youth populations.
Thank you. But with all due respect, the assessment's been done.
Yeah, yeah, at, at, at a Ontario-wide level, for sure, um-
No, 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 at the local level, the gentleman has asked you if you would come and speak to his group. He's done the assessment and determined in his mind that that would be helpful to that group.
And, and we'd be happy to work, to work with that, with the, with youth in, in the community, just to help them.
Thank you.
Something at a much smaller level, but I, I think it's getting, and I'm not sure if this is the right avenue to talk about. Talking about kids and healthy communities and that. Is there any way that we can maybe get, I don't know if it's the OPP or if it's a health unit, talk to the kids about helmets when they're riding their bikes? That's turning into, I think it's gonna, I think it's a big thing. And, um, being a former firefighter, I don't want to have Brian going out to the community to see a kid with, uh, an accident that wasn't, wasn't wearing a helmet. Is there any way that something can be brought forward? To the schools, to the health unit, or through the OPP, or maybe work in conjunction with, um, with the two to kind of bring this, this law out so the kids understand what, what the seriousness is to this?
We definitely do have resources at the health unit, just the, that's a good work. Um, so through Parachute Canada, um, they have several, several resources on proper wearing of helmets. Um, and, um, I believe there are also curriculum-based teaching lesson plans that would incorporate that as well. Um, so that's definitely something we would, again, I, I believe would fit, you know, this type of role, probably our school health nursing role, and then if we went beyond school, um, that would fit me too in working in the community, um, and partnering, um, with local enforcement is definitely something we've done in the past and we'll continue to do, um, to make sure that that messaging, um, gets across.
And I do know the OPP do have a program. As a matter of fact, they even give away helmets at times.
Well, that's fine, they, they, to, they can give it away, but if nobody's enforcing it, then they're not going to wear it.
Well, no, because it's still a gray area, but a helmet, yeah. And again, it's, and again, you have to ask for that, for that service.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know, like, did you ask, say to the school to get the health unit or the OPP to come in and have a, have a discussion, or is it, can the community do something like that?
Or, or, or a health group could, could make the request or any other group. Now, any, any other questions?
Excuse me, one question as a, a restaurant operator, part of the, your idea of all the your people in there, find them very helpful on the way through. There's always some little thing, updates that you have to do to keep up the standards and stuff. But I just wonder, what, what amount of enforcement do you put on the trucking industry and, and the wholesale industries that are supplying us? Because I know over the years I've got products delivered to me that I've ended up throwing out, but through my inspection of them, that's coming. And I just wonder sometimes in the process of it getting to the restaurant, that a lot of the times the restaurants get blamed for the bad food that went out. The bad food happened on the way to the rest, restaurant, but the cooks or chefs didn't, just didn't catch it on the, as they're preparing it along the way. And I never really knew what the, what type of enforcement do you put on for inspections and stuff of their facilities, so.
That's a, that's a really good question, not one unfortunately that I know the answer to.
I, I have a kind of an answer and I can find out more information for you. I think a lot of it's submitted to Inspection Agency and they would be responsible for that. We have though, at times, uh, one time an OPP stopped this, uh, truck with chicken. Uh, I was on call that weekend and so, um, and it wasn't refrigerated. So our health inspectors did go out to that and did deal with that individual truck. We wouldn't stop a truck, but because it was stopped by the OPP, then we got involved in that. So I can certainly find out who's responsible for that. I do think it's probably the Canadian Food Inspection Agency and then them responsible for that stuff being transported.
Your, your inspectors that inspect our restaurants and stuff don't inspect the wholesalers?
I don't believe they do, but I will find that out and if you have a business card, I'll email you.
I just let our staff know.
Okay, perfect, I'll do that.
Me know.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that.
Well, looks like we're, looks like we're out of questions, Catherine. Uh, and your, uh, your contact information is right here, so we can all, we can all, uh, access that.
That sounds great. Yes, please do, and I will be following up on, on, um, Stephen DeBau's request and, um, and your request as well on, um, injury prevention and bike helmets, so, we'll be in touch.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Porter, and that is regarding- Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Porter, and that is regarding supercharges at 2058 Dundas Street in Cardville. And Council, we are going to discuss this later on in the, in the program as well after we hear Mr. Porter in seven A later on in the program. Mr. Porter?
Hi, I'll try to re- pretty sure it's a very straightforward request. Our house was built in about nineteen oh two, and for some reason, our basement, we have two stone walls in the foundation. They were both about three feet thick, and there's about a foot or a little more space between the two walls. I have no idea why it was built like that, but it was. Now, um. We gotta know, we gotta, when I saw my February water bill for this year, there, we were using four hundred and forty percent more water than we had on average for the past year. So of course we looked into it. And what we found was, in the kitchen and two of the bathrooms are on the east side of the house, and the water comes in the west side of the house. So the water that's used in those other rooms has to go through this, these two stone walls, and there's a tunnel drilled or somehow pounded through these stone walls, and that's where all the pipes have to run to get to the other side of the house. And those, we discovered that there was a copper pipe leaky in there, quite, like a significant leak. And, but it was dripping between the walls into the dirt floor at the bottom. So it was, it was very hard to discover because the water was not, never obvious to us. You know, it wasn't seen, wasn't like it was, you know, running into anything, damaging anything in the house. It took a while to find the leak. We fixed it the day we found it, but it wasn't easy to find. So now, since wastewater is a, building for wastewater is a function of water used in a house, water that goes through a water meter, and this water, obviously, the water that we were charged for in the wastewater system never went through the wastewater system, it went into the ground and will probably end up in the St. Lawrence at some point in its load. But it seems that we shouldn't be charged for the extra three hundred and forty percent of water we've used. We shouldn't be charged for that to go through the wastewater system and that it would be reasonable to ask for a credit on our bill to compensate that. I did the math here, you guys have access, obviously, to the bills, and they put the bill number on top. So, but the difference would be about two hundred and eleven dollars and sixteen cents for that month. I think it would, in terms of a council and a local government, and, you know, it would be ethical to, to return that money or to not collect money for working if it, the money did not go through the sewer, the, the water did not go through the sewers because it went into the ground.
Now, anything, anything else to add to that, Mr. Porter?
No.
Okay, I have, I'll have a comment later on. I'll open, open it up for any discussion at this point in time. Any questions for Mr. Porter? Or we can also deal with it at seven A as well.
I'll save my questions till seven A.
Thank you.
So I'll just hear back to some point on your decision, is that?
Well, if you'd like to wait around, we'll be discussing it very shortly.
Will there be a decision tonight, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll carry on. And next on the agenda is our action information items, seven, and the first one is seven A, which is.
Six.
We're on six. I'm sorry. I just jumped ahead. I was, I was thinking of Mr. Porter, getting him on quicker. Thank you, thank you so much. Discussion items on number six, which is six A, and it's the Johnstown servicing survey. And is someone going to speak to that?
I believe this was an initiative that Councilor Dillbaugh began, and we were asked at the last meeting to bring forward a draft letter that could be sent out to Johnstown residents with respect to this item. So the intent here was that staff would provide some potential wording and, and get councils committees input on whether or not the wording satisfies the need.
Yes.
So what we have in front of us is a draft, and so I have a few questions. First of all, MCEA, Municipal Class Environmental Assessment, that's basically the same study that we did for the water at the industrial park, same kind of a study. How does this estimated one hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost compare with the actual cost of that previous study? I was under the impression that the previous study was around a hundred and a quarter.
So through, through, through the chair, it, the, that study about three years ago was approximately around the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar mark.
So is, what, what leads this, this estimate to come to one fifty then? Through the chair, if I may?
Through, through the chair, I don't think it's unrealistic to think that the, the, the cost to perform that study would, would have increased in three years. To, to that degree, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm putting it as a, as a rough upset. We, we wouldn't know that until the consultant was hired and we have some additional information.
And I understand it's an approximate, but, Mr. Chair, if I can just try to indicate where I'm going here. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to see if, when we use a hundred and fifty thousand as the base price, and then we use, I'm trying to remember the number of households that I, I saw it here someplace.
Hundred and seventy, but.
Hundred and seventy, and it just seems to me that in one of the earlier discussions that Councilor Dillbaugh talked to, we thought that there was around two hundred and twenty units. So it just seems to me that if we could somehow use a lower number for the estimated cost of the study and a higher number for the household, we might get that number down somewhere a little bit lower than nine hundred and maybe get a different response to this, to the, to the stud, to the, to the survey. The other thing that, and I'm, I'm gonna put two items on the table here at the same time if I might, Mr. Chair. The other thing is, and I know this is just a draft, the township requires a seventy percent of letters returned, and I, I think that's a bit high, and I'm, I'm wondering if, I mean, personally, I would be, I would be looking for about a fifty percent return on the letters. Even a fifty percent return on a survey is actually quite high. Generally, these kind of surveys don't bring in much more than, actually, on these type of surveys, twenty-five percent is high. So I just, I just point that out. And then we put another standard in here that seventy-five, eighty-five percent of the returned letters would indicate yes for the project to return. So I think those standards are a little bit high, and I'd like to see some discussion on all three items, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I, I, I really like the draft of the letter. It, it sort of puts people on notice as to what's being contemplated. But I just don't wanna scare them away. I'd rather get a, a better feeling.
Very good. Any, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Let's see, for me.
Okay, Councilor Dillbaugh, do you have any?
I just have that, a couple of things that they wanna finalize. First of all, it's not, I think we have more than hundred and seventy, but in, in the subdivision, but I did take in from, from the church west down to Ted Adams', if you know where I'm talking about. The last house before the park on the north side, and that's why we got those twenty-some houses, okay?
From the church east?
Uh, from the church east, yes.
That's where you got your two twenty-five?
Two twenty, yeah, when you take in the subdivision at one. You gave me one one seventy, I do believe, and it's two thirty-three to be exact. And, and in the Johnstown subdivision alone is two oh two. So that's where we picked up the other roughly, plus the school. So that's where we picked up the, around thirty more houses. It's on the number two from the church east.
Yes, go ahead.
Through the chair, I just, I just wanna clarify, the, if we look at the draft study area, the outline of the area does include the area on the south side of County Road two. So is the area correct? And we can recount, recount the houses within it, but does the study area address?
Well, Mike, your map, I know, but doesn't.
There's the truce there.
Yeah, see, and where's number two, there's sixteen, see here?
Yeah, so it goes like, goes right to here?
Yeah.
And that's, that's the end of the housing.
That's right. Ted, Ted Adams' last one. So it'll be from the church east, I don't know, have you got your map there? Deb, I can show you.
Yes.
Right from.
Two thirty.
There's sixteen, so there's a church, and this would be Teddy Island's last one.
So that, that is the.
From there to here.
Yep, and that's in there.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Because you're, because what you gave me just doesn't, you gave me two oh two in the subdivision, and I counted them, those other thirty houses.
We can review the numbers, but don't forget that was done by an intern.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
But yeah, certainly, we can, we can review the numbers as long as we've got the outline of the study area as you.
Yeah, from the church to, to Ted Adams, it was thirty-one houses.
See, if we used the numbers two twenty, for instance, divided that into the, into the, into, into the cost, it comes out to just under seven hundred, which is maybe a little higher on that. Any questions, uh, Councilor Hunter?
Well, I just, I have a lot of questions here, but I don't know if there's any answers for them until we see what the residents have to say. I don't really think we should be trying to give people a real good feeling by trying to drop the price way down on it. Prices are gonna go up regardless every year, and in my estimation, what we studied for the water to the industrial park, I think the study would be less costly for that than what they're gonna do with studying when they're studying two hundred and twenty units that are already on the ground and something that we're proposing might be on the ground. They're gonna get a little more complex, I think, in their study, so I'm kinda wondering even if the one fifty's gonna be the actual number on it, when it comes in. And I hate to be sitting here when you, if you drop the numbers and increase the numbers and come up, even if we come up with a seven hundred or six hundred dollar figure, and then when the study gets done, they end up with an eleven hundred dollar bill sitting on there. Same, I think there're gonna be a lot more complaints about that. As far as the numbers returned, for when you're talking a project this big, seventy percent of the letters returned, I don't know how we do it, but I'd almost like to see the letter, letters at each, some way delivered to each house and say, we'll be back to pick them up in two weeks' time, and we need every one of yous to mark this letter, make your decision one way or another how you're gonna do it. Because if we get seventy percent returned, and we go say fifty, and Mayor suggested fifty percent's a high, totally not generally returned, and I recognize that, that is on a study that's not mandatory that you return. If you go with even a seventy percent, not on, you're only talking, then about thirty-five percent of the people saying they're in favor of paying the money. And I think when the crunch comes and all of a sudden, you got a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar bill that's gonna be, even if it's spread over twenty years to, to pay it, there might be a lot of people that check that yes on there, all of a sudden wants to change their mind over putting a yes on it. So I, I don't know how we do it, but I'd almost like to see it mandatory, the hundred and seventy or two hundred and twenty, whatever houses that are there, that here's your letter, and we need a response. Whether it's two weeks or three weeks or whatever we give them. If it costs us a little bit of money of the municipality to send one of our employees around to pick them up or something, I'd be willing to absorb that cost rather than take the chance that we tag a bunch of people in that really don't want it, so.
And if we only get thirty percent back, it's, it's done.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
This is quite a, a big undertaking, and it's gonna really affect people financially. And I think the way staff has got it written for the seventy percent and eighty-five percent, I think that's the way to go, because it's gonna really put the info saying, people are gonna talk, and they're gonna want your vote counted, regardless if it's no or yes. So that's what my feeling is, the seventy and eighty-five percent should stay.
I kinda have to agree with Councilor Hunter. I think everybody, it's a huge undertaking, and I think everybody should, whether they agree with it or not, it's either yes or no, and we're gonna pick it up. And, I mean, you can have an optional mail-in, and by the time you got all the mails, if, if everybody hasn't replied back, then we'll do a while, drive around and pick them up. Because I think everybody needs to, needs to weigh in on this.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel the seventy and the eighty-five are, are a little on the high side, personally, myself. I was thinking more of the sixty, sixty percent range and, and actually sixty on both, to be quite truthful. That, that was just, that was just my feeling. As, as for the number of units, it appears, it appears to me that we should be as accurate as possible with the, with the number of units, whether it be two twenty or one seventy. I, I think that, that number coming out is going to be, going to be quite important. But the other question that I have was, we, we had discussed previously about a public meeting. Now, if we did have a public meeting, would it be prior to the survey going out? Or would it be after the survey came in? What would be the preference on, on, on that? Because at a public meeting, you can get, certainly get this out there, and they would, they, the residents would be informed at, at that time. It may give you a higher response of, of letters coming back. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so just to close the loop on a couple of the issues that I raised, I'll yield on the hundred and fifty, and I, and I think that the Director of Operations is right, probably costs have increased. And I think also I agree with, second thought, I agree with Councilor Hunter that this is a major undertaking, and better that we're a little bit high on our estimate as to what the study would cost than below, so I won't go there. Also, I raised the issue of the response. I really liked Councilor Hunter's suggestion that we deliver them and pick them up. But having said that, there's one other basic concept that's missing here. And, and I would like to see a paragraph in the letter that makes it very clear that if the study were to show that the majority of people support the study, they have to remember that the.
they have to remember that the, that if the study shows that the system go ahead, the total cost of implementing the system is to the resident taxpayer. And that concept needs to be, I think, embedded in this letter someplace. I don't know how, I'm not gonna do the wordsmithing at the table. But I'll yield on those other points, and I think, I think been some good points made that, that is, maybe we should be expecting a higher return, because the implications down the road are pretty onus.
Yes.
Yeah, good point from...
Yes.
I'd just say, maybe along with their, their mayor, that I agree with that concept of being in there someplace, and we make it quite clear that this is a residential burden, but it's not just the study, but, and there is the possibility that the study comes back and says, yes, you need sewer in there, maybe that you need water two in there, the ministry happens to decide that, yes, this is gonna happen, then it's gonna happen, so not gonna be a choice then, so...
So the next steps, uh, I'll, I'll just ask, uh, this, the next steps are to reword the, uh, the survey and bring it back?
If, if that's the direction of the committee.
Uh, but I don't think, no, can we, can we bring it, rather than waiting another full month, can we bring it to another meeting, uh, other than back to all that works? I mean, we're only just looking for a couple of twists on the, on the draft that's already been made. I like the, I like the study area map.
All right, the, could we, now, we have another meeting coming up next Monday?
If I may, Mr. Chair, the, um, the advisory members to this committee, um, yeah, may wanna have a look at it.
Oh, right, yes, yeah.
He just emailed to us.
Well, we can't do business by email, though.
What, what?
You're only, the, the only way we could do that is, uh, is if the staff sent it out and said, this is the, this is what we're sending out. How would you, how would you do this by email?
Well, I think, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if, if we're to follow the committee's apparent direction, that this be handled with work, it's gonna take us some time to coordinate manpower to do that, because as the deputy clerk has suggested, whoever goes out might need one.
Might need what?
A bodyguard.
No, just when you go and pick them up.
You know, with, with the summer months coming, we may have some additional manpower available. So delaying till, till May to give, with committee's indulgence might not be that bad a thing.
Yeah, so the, the next public works need...
I don't think there's any ma- major rush about getting it out.
It's been years now.
Um, except for twenty-five years, probably, that problem, so...
We are gonna, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we are gonna put that in the, in the minute, we're in the letter, that possibility after the Ministry of Environment investigates, it may be on our... We may not have any choice, but to go ahead.
I will, I will hedge my bets on that one. We'll, we'll do some wordsmithing, but I, I need to be sure that we're not, um, indicating something may happen that isn't...
Might not happen, yeah.
Yes, so I, we just wanna make sure that we cross our Ts and dotted our Is.
No, no, that's fine, I appreciate it.
So, so along those lines, through the chair, if I may, is there, um, one of the, one of the main issues that we just did discuss at our previous meeting was, is the provincial government at the point where if you do sewer, you must do water? Uh, we know that, uh, the Spencerville subdivision was the last subdivision from, apparently in Ontario, where they were allowed to only introduce one service, and that was sewer service. So do we know that that kind of rule still exists within Ministry of the Environment? Do we have a way of checking that out sort of unofficially?
No, and, and that's, that's my point exactly, we need to find out whether or not that's the case. The other thing is, at this point, we're only asking about the study, the study is not likely to, the ministry is not likely to require the study address both services. So the question is, what happens at the end of the study?
Okay.
And with EA for the water, we know what happened, is we got the study, went, yep, that's good, we put it on a shelf, because we know we can't spend twelve million dollars, whatever it is, for like...
A water pump.
So, and we, you know, at this point, we're really focusing on the study.
Okay, and, and the study is gonna be focused on the sewers?
Yeah.
So we have really no recommendation here, so we don't need a, uh...
We'll just bring it back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We'll move on now then to, uh, item six D, which is a motion to establish a reserve fund for modernization grant. And, uh, Mayor Seo, I believe you're going to speak to this?
Well, I, I just provided this as a notice of motion. Uh, the concept here is very clear. I think that this money has to be sanitized in some way, and only used for the purposes that are outlined in the minister's letter, which is attached. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that the committee will endorse this resolution, it'll go forward to council next week.
Any, any, any comments?
Through the chair. I gotta leave our mayors on the right track here, I think this money, well, the way they worded it, worded it in the press, I don't think that's the, the exact way they mean it, I don't think we just get to do what we want with it, I think it's quite clear if you read between the lines, that it's meant for doing studies and meant for consultation with other parties and one thing or another how you're gonna deliver a service, not that you're gonna add an extra service or cut your costs by using some of it to pay for something else, but I think I think we might spend it that way, but I think we might get our fingers wrapped pretty heavy if we did, so...
Use a little bit of that six A.
I would be quite pleased to make the motion that we send this forward.
I'll second the motion. Well, we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor, any, any other, any other discussion before I go ahead? Mr. Counselor Hill?
Nope.
And, uh, I, I, I'm in favor myself of the endorsement, so we'll, I will call the question all in favor. Okay?
Did Mr. Paxton seconded that?
Yes, yes. He does? Okay, moving on, uh, we go now to item number seven, action...
Six C, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chair? Six C?
Six, six C.
You're absolutely correct, can I add that? But it's not on this one, okay. Six C, which is the, um, rural and northern fund application update, and, uh, CAO is going to, uh, speak to this?
I will introduce it, uh, the Director of Operations and I were chatting last week, and if you may recall, on Monday night last week, the mayor asked for an update on this, and I was told we didn't have enough information, but on Friday, we decided that we did have enough information, which is why we slaked it on the agenda. So the, the Director of Operations has been gathering data, we've, we've been in touch with the OPP and the MTO with regard to accidents as well, he's been, uh, you know, looking through our, uh, roads needs plan and our traffic counts and all that good stuff as well, uh, has been exploring the actual application itself, so he now knows, for example, that we cannot have a single project that runs from Rooney Road, then jumps the highway and carries on down Cedar Grove, so it has to be either or, and, uh, I would, uh, open this up for questions, I guess, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, we just wanted to make sure that you had all the information before we went further with our application.
Go ahead.
So first of all, I appreciate getting that clarification, thanks very much, and, uh, and I think that's a, they've, they've got a very, uh, they've got a very tight definition of what they mean here. The, the project, the components of the project physically touch or intersect, that's pretty definitive. So, and, and you know, I've, I've seen this description of these two roads, Cedar Grove Road and Rooney Road, and I, and the, the, um, the, the numbers sort of jump out at me, but for some reason, I'm still feeling that Rooney Road should be the priority, and I don't know why I feel that way, uh, but I just, I just feel that Rooney Road should be the priority, I... It seems that the, the traffic count is less.
But it is gravel, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it is gravel, so it would...
It's, it's in need.
Yeah, so it would, it would basically go gravel to...
To surface creation.
Well, would be actually pavement. It would go gravel to pavement, it would skip that intermediate step, if I could put it that way. So I don't know. Either way, if we can get either a project, I'll be happy. Where's the chair? ND for the closure, what's ND?
Oh, sorry, through, through the chair, that said, we, we don't have any data, we have no data.
No data?
Through, through the chair, we were lucky enough a couple of years ago to actually be doing our traffic count when there was actually a four oh one closure off through Cedar Grove, so we have that accurate data.
Counselor?
I see the numbers here too, and, uh, I can see where they're, they're getting the traffic count, because their trucks are coming off four sixteen and going Cedar Grove, Grove, and they're shut off there, that's why they're getting the big, big count there, because there's more traffic coming back four sixteen than there is County, County Road eighteen coming, coming back, but I don't know what the traffic count is coming off four oh one when there's the accidents in between. I know there's been more accidents between Johnstown and Prescott, uh, stoppings on their head, it's been between, between, they have a way around likely. And I see where staff's coming from with the recommendation for the numbers here, it maybe looks better for the traffic and stuff. I'm kinda looking at the numbers for the township where we're talking, seventeen percent dollars, probably the Rooney Road project's gonna probably be far more money than what Cedar Grove pro- project would be, so for me, if I have to fund one or the other, I'd sooner spend the sixty or seventy percent with, with gas tax dollars on Cedar Grove Road and spend the eighty-three percent provincial money and federal money on Maruni Road and get it brought, brought up, and then we might get... You'd get, you're gonna get more traffic on it, it's paid, because then transports are gonna divert there once they showed up on Google, but it's a paved, paved road when they're diverting on that section, but it's, uh... For numbers wise, I agree with staff, Cedar Road, Road Road's probably for traffic counts, that's probably the number one road, I don't know whether that makes it any difference if whether we're gonna get our money for the grant or not, but, uh, the other road's the one that's gonna cost us the most money, and sooner or later, something's gotta be done to that road, road, because it's and if the province does decide to sell that land, if it's paid, they're, they're, they're gonna get a bigger dollar for the land when they sell it, and we're gonna have a lot of trouble with all that road, if it's a paved road than rather than the kind of crap road it is right now a lot of the time, so I know they even this spring, you've put, put quite a bit of gravel on it there in bad spots. I don't know, I'm torn either way, I can see where staff's coming with the recommendation, certainly does make sense that way, but I'm just looking at the finances for the township, maybe...
Bigger bang for the seventeen percent.
Yeah. Dollars we can get, if we're gonna get three million dollars or two million dollars, so...
Through the chair, the other, um, other thing I'd take into consideration too is the gravel road, you're still, you're gonna continue with maintenance upkeep over the years, so that's just gonna continue on if you don't do the upgrade.
Through the chair. I know Rooney Road along the four oh one, I think you can land a DC nine on it, there's not much gravel underneath it. But there are some sections of Rooney Road, I think, where the maple trees used to be, I think the subgrade there's pretty thin. But it would be a great road for an emergency detour, right, for tractor trailers and get them off Cedar Grove. So for me, I'd say go for Rooney Road.
And, and just to piggyback on that remark, it has been used as an EDR in, in the past. And, uh, and also, I'll just, I'll just convey my feelings, I think Rooney Road would be also the way, the way to go, so, um... Does staff have enough information based on, based on that?
Yeah, and I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, just make it clear, there was no recommendation here.
That's correct, yes.
We're just providing information.
Right, thank you.
Well, before we make a definitive, uh, end to this conversation, does, does, other than the, the numbers that we see in front of us, does the staff have some other, uh, factor that we're not aware of that, that would lead you to feel it's a better candidate? And the, the reason I'm, I'm, I'm going with Cedar Grove, Counselor Hunter expressed it, got captured the essence of what I was thinking. We get a bigger bang for our seventeen percent, but is there another factor that we're missing?
Well, I think there's a couple of things that, that come clear when you do the, when you do the actual application. One is that Rooney Road doesn't appear on our, on our roads need study in as high a spot as Cedar Grove, so that lends itself to our asset management plan, um, so that's part of it. The other part of it is that staff sense, and I have no, no real basis for this, staff sense that there's not gonna be a lot of dollars available, especially if Leesey Grandville gets ten million dollars towards its County Road forty-three project. That doesn't leave a whole lot left over for this county, and, and maybe a, a less expensive project would be more likely to get funded, but that's a guess, we don't, we don't have anything to back that up. But, I mean, we're happy to fill out the long shape where it can go.
But we don't, at this point, we don't have class D estimates on either one.
No.
No. Okay, I'll stick with...
Through the, through the chair, through her operation, uh, you're maintaining these roads, have you any sense, like, if we, to bring these roads up to the standard that we're wanting to bring it up to? Full pavement and stuff, compared to Cedar Grove and Rooney, Rooney, yeah, I know, needs some drainage, it needs some subbase, lots of subbase work on it, but then Cedar Grove going up through the hills and one thing or another to bring it up, how much really of a difference of a cost is there gonna be here, because there's a lot of, a lot of real bad areas and curves and stuff up Cedar Grove Road to deal with, with to bring it up to that standards, and there's quite a few houses up through there that are fairly close to the road up there too, how much, do you figure there's much of a difference in the dollar, or how much more intrusive is, would it be up that way than, like, Rooney Road, they're really not, you know, no many houses really close to the road there to stop it from being widened out or anything, so...
So through, through the chair, um, the Cedar Grove Road distance is about, uh, four point eight, let's say, five kilometer section. Uh, Rooney Road is probably, if, if you're, uh, taking from twenty-two, which would be Jordan, uh, Rooney, you're, you're closer, you're closer to nine kilometers. I think in, in either case, um, I, I think Cedar Grove is, is gonna run between, uh, three and a half to four million, and Rooney would be well over the five million. Because you, you would be, you would be looking at some vertical and horizontal realignment, potentially some, um, potentially some property acquisition to, to widen that, um, right of way in, in certain sections on, on, on either road to, to make it a, right, because what we wanna do is make it a safer road and, uh, easier to maintain moving forward, so, um, neither road is, is going to be inexpensive. And the, my, my, my only, my only thing with it being heavily based on health and safety, uh, there is always that difficulty when you're trying to present a, a case for, for a traffic count of a hundred and twenty. We, we, in, in that competitive, in a competitive application, where the, the Cedar Grove, we have a little bit more data that we can try to push on them, uh, from that end, but understandably, there's no doubt that Rooney Road is going to be more expensive to, to complete, and if, if you're looking based on that seventeen percent, we'll do our best to present the best argument that we possibly can within the framework that that application provides us. It's, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty restrictive in that, in that sense.
Is there a limit to, to the application?
I mean, you're mentioning five million, but we're not limited to a, a, a project that's five or under, or ten or under.
My understanding from the County Road three, excuse me, from the County Road 43 experience at county, that the project has to be less than ten.
Through, through the chair, I believe that the project has to be less than ten because they are partnering with North Granville.
Yeah.
And each can put up to a maximum of five million.
Okay, so then would we be limited to five or limited to ten?
We, we, we would be limited to five.
Oh, we would?
We would. And, and anything, anything above that cost is, is one hundred percent on our.
Okay, so we would go as far as the five would take us and, and get our seventeen percent. That's where it would start?
After, after that, anything above that. So any, any of the drainage upgrades that are not eligible costs would be, would be one hundred percent on our, our dollar.
Here's the chair. Another question on the project. Any drainage and stuff that doesn't come in, that doesn't qualify as your program?
Through, the, the application does indicate that any stormwater work is, is not eligible. I, I'm going by the premise that cross culverts are, are part of the road network and will, will be ineligible cost.
Well, I'm going up Cedar Grove Road there and when you come to the narrow part there where we've got the steel paragliding along up over the hill there by Christie's there. Would that be considered widening it when that'd have to be widened there and different drainage, different thing? Would that be on us then to do that or would that be considered part of that? Because that'd be a fairly expensive chunk there to deal with.
I, I would anticipate there's probably portions of that that would be one hundred percent us and other parts that, that I believe would be able to be encompassed and ineligible in that. It's still trying to, to, to feel out all, all those aspects right now. Because if, if it's, as we said, if it's, if it's touching or intersecting, we're, we're, we're okay.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Can we do that, like Rooney Road, can we do it, say, Jordan West? Because we know Rooney Road from Jordan East has got good subgrade and everything else. And you can handle tractor trailer. Can we just put it in from Jordan Road West to the west limits, looking after roadside ditching included? Could we do that?
So through, through the chair, roadside ditching would, would, would be at our cost, but I, I'd like...
Roadside ditching?
It's, my understanding on, on, on how that application is set out.
Even though it's an identical part of the road?
Potentially, so.
Well. Anyway. Call it a good answer. Which way? A or B? I'm still going with Rooney.
I think. From my understanding, the way, way going there with a lot of the ditching and stuff, well, being us, I really think we're gonna end up paying a lot on Cedar Grove because I think there's an awful lot of ditching and drainage to do up through there that's gonna be on land we're gonna have to acquire and stuff. Yeah, through that pretty narrow road up, up through there. I know we need to pave it to do something to it to bring it up, but if we bring it up from the standards that I'd like to see it brought up to on there. I don't know how real happy the residents be on there. They complain about the traffic out there now with one of the speed limits lowered on it and one thing or other. We widen it out and bring it up to this, we're definitely not, we think it's not gonna be lowered on it, so.
Okay, do we need some more direction?
It appears to be a consensus that we pursue the Rooney Road project.
I'll just, I'll just go around the table quickly. Councilor Dill, Dill?
Rooney.
Rooney, Mr. Mayor, myself, Rooney.
Rooney, Rooney.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now that we've finished with six C, we can now proceed to item number seven. Sorry about that, folks. And the first, the first item is the sewer charges at 2058 Dundas Street, Carroll, which is seven A. And is the CAO going to speak to, to this? We all have had the, the information sent out by staff and you've had a chance to read it over.
Just the...
A little background, please.
We, we regularly submit requests from folks on water and sewer to reduce or eliminate the sewer charges on water that they feel has not hit the sanitary sewer. Policy has been to not permit that refund. And so the staff recommendation is to maintain charges previously built to this location, which lines up with your existing water sewer use file.
I understand. And I also understand as well that even though the water does not directly go into the sewer system, it does eventually through the water table can get into the storm sewer. Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, we do see some.
In, in assuming that, which of course do require maintenance. We do have a recommendation. I'll open it up to questions.
So first of all, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, I'd just like to know whether the delegation has seen the staff briefing note. And the reason that I ask that is because in the briefing note that I've got in front of me, I have a copy of a letter that was sent to Mr. Porter on January the fourth advising him that it has been brought to my attention by Rito St. Lawrence Utilities, who are contracted by the township to complete our water sewer billings, that you have constant water usage, constant usage, which means every hour of every day, there is water running at your location. And then I've got another letter in front of me dated January the 28th to Mr. Porter that says, "I am writing to advise you of an ongoing issue at your residence. You have constant water usage still showing, which means every hour of every day, there's water running at your location."
Can I just create a question? Can I explain that or? We, we normally, we normally don't allow, you, you came to us and made your deputation, delegation. And I asked you if you had anything else to add to it. You said, no, you didn't. I, I am going to let the rest of council respond to what we have so far. I also...
Those are both unfounded.
Well, I also understand, Mr. Porter, that the reason why, the reason why our system works so well is because Rito St. Lawrence is very quick to pick up these problems. And these problems relate to the user as a, as a professional courtesy for them to realize that there is problems somewhere.
On both those occasions, they reassured me that there was nothing unusual in my water usage. And what those indicated was the occasional nighttime use of a washroom. And I went on their advice. So I phoned them both times and they said, "What we see is that somebody gets up in the night and goes to the washroom." And they, they asked me to check to see if the toilets were running through and they weren't. We followed up on that. And I, until the bill came in where it was four hundred and forty percent higher, that's when we seriously started to investigate. But those two letters, I was told were unfounded and that there was nothing to indicate any unusual water use in our house.
Now, when you say unfounded, who gave you that information?
Rito St. Lawrence.
Rito St. Lawrence.
Well, excuse me.
But I don't see where they think that's...
No, I mean, the letters speak for themselves. This letter is meant as a courtesy to inform you of a possible leak.
And the water usage was still at twenty cubic meters per month, which had, which it had been since we moved there two years ago. And they said there is nothing unusual about your water usage. So I believed them. And because we had not found a leak in the pipe at that time, we, we, we saw no reason to do it, to take any action. And, and Rito St. Lawrence was telling us, "There is nothing here that you need to be concerned about other than somebody in your house is getting up and making a bathroom." We're also foster parents. We have two foster children. So, and we have two teenagers ourselves. So we have six people in the house. And it was well within reason to think that some people were getting up to use the washroom. But like, that's what I was being told was a problem. So that, that's why it continued to the point where the leak got so bad that it became crucial to find it. We didn't think there was a leak before that. We were told not to worry about it.
Go ahead.
I guess my problem is, I mean, these two letters are just part of the issue as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm, you know, in my original response to, to Mr. Porter, I, I indicated it here. You know, that these kinds of requests are seldom granted. And I'm thinking back to the last request of this nature that we dealt with, which was a house where the owner was in Florida and the outside tap had been running for quite a number of days. And the bill was considerably higher than this. And, I mean, we just, the committee maintained its policy. They're just playing, and I mean, again, in that case, the water was not going directly into the sewage system. It was going down the hill to God knows where. But, I mean, the committee insisted that the bill be paid.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but do you really see that as an ethical approach? If you're not using, if a, if a constituent is not using the sewer system, then why is there a charge for using it? I, I just don't see that as an ethical approach to business.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get into a, a personal discussion with Mr. Porter here.
I think that that's the only way to resolve issues is that you get all the information. And that's where we're coming from is we want you to have all the information and those letters don't provide that.
Yeah, I didn't come to react hysterical. I appreciate the chance to talk to you guys tonight. And I, I appreciate living in a country where constituents can come to face the government and express their concerns. And if your decision is out, then that's what it is. But I think you should reconsider your policy because it's seriously unethical. Thank you.
And CAO, did you want to speak?
Oh, no, I have no idea. Policy is what it is. If council ever moves to the changes, that's their...
It is, no.
It's not the dorm.
We were notified prior to January fourth of a problem by Rito St. Lawrence. We were notified again after that of a problem.
Then that's a nervous sense of letter, Brad.
Quite a letter.
Well.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we have, we have no way of knowing what, what Mr. Porter's conversation was with Rito St. Lawrence.
And on the other, on the other, on the other hand, or the other side of the coin, it could have been a toilet leaking badly. Who knows? We're taking Mr. Porter's word that it was a pipe, but it could have been something else.
Interesting thing to me is why would he phone Rito St. Lawrence? It wasn't Rito St. Lawrence that sent him the letter.
Yeah, how would he even, well, I guess he could have...
Talked to the person that sent the letter.
Anyway, council, we have a, we have a recommendation here. And the recommendation reads, "That committee recommends that council maintain the sewer charges previously billed to this location." Do I have a mover?
Right here.
Mr. Packwood and Mr. Dillabon, I'm going to ask the question. All in favor? All right. Any opposed, if any? None. Sorry. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we come now to the fire department and the first quarter fire report. And Chief, you're on board.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just highlight a few things on, on my report. Under the, the call total, we started off the, the year with only thirty-six calls, which is a, a lot better than what we were looking at last year with fifty-four. Fire losses were relatively low, a couple of vehicles and a very minor garage fire that the homeowner luckily noticed and was able to put out on his own before our arrival. Under updates and changes, our online burn permit system's working very well. And we have nine new recruits that have started our recruit program on February the seventh. You'll note under training courses, there's quite, quite active in training again in this quarter with quite a few NFPA courses being picked away at. So we're trying to focus on the NFPA certification. And finally, under activity, we, we held a pancake breakfast at Station One that went over way better than anybody anticipated with over two hundred and fifty people. And we did receive many positive comments from, from many people that attended.
And I will, I will say right now, it was excellent. Anything else, Chief, on that?
No, sir.
Any questions, concerns?
So under training courses attended, two hundred and thirty-four online training courses completed in the quarter?
Correct.
Seriously, what would be the average duration of that kind of a course?
Through the chair, generally, we allow forty-five minutes to, to an hour would be an average.
Seriously, two hundred and thirty-four hours?
Through the chair. Mr. Mur, what, what's our status then for Station Number Two? Are we pretty much where you wanna be as far as recruits? And I knew you were having some problems there.
Through the chair, yes, the, of the nine, the nine new recruits, seven of them are from the south end. So they'll be reporting to Station Two, so we're catching up.
And you're happy, you're pleased where you're going with it?
Absolutely.
Through the chair. Mr. Packwood? What an excellent report and it's really nice to see all the officials here department.
Any other questions?
Just the one, assistance not required. Seven, is that called 401 or something, or is that just 911 called or something that were created?
Through the chair, they could be just about anything, but I would suggest that those calls were, we had a couple of snowstorms on Highway sixteen and every time we, we seemed to end up with cars in the ditch on Highway sixteen. And I would say the majority of those were, we were called out to a car in the ditch and we weren't required by the time we got there.
Anything else?
One, one last thing before we leave the fire report. I just wanna once again thank the chief for arranging a little presentation to ingredient here. I know the press was here. I hope they do a good write-up on that story because the whole thrust of the presentation was to recognize a good corporate citizen that allow, that gives his staff the freedom to, to provide the service. And so I think, I'm hopeful, Chief, that, that you'll get some uptake on that story.
Maybe get some uptake from some other good corporate citizens.
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
All right, moving along, we're going to seven C, first quarter operations report. And I believe, Mr. Grant, you're going to speak to this, do some highlighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll make note that a number of our gravel roads during this quarter needed some spot repairs. There, there were some soft spots as, as, as the winter ended and frost started to come out. Under winter control, you'll, you'll note that we had thirty-nine winter events. And we had several piles of, or loads of snow removed from the built up areas. And that also included some areas in Johnstown and New Exford in addition to our... And that also included some areas in Johnstown, New Exford, uh, in addition to our typical removals in, in Cardinal and Spencerville. And, and naturally, during, during the thaw, we've, uh, we've had crews out, um, fairly constantly, uh, thawing out, uh, culverts and removing any obstructions. Did you want me to go through the entire report, or are there any questions on this?
Just highlight whatever you, you, uh, you want, Mr. Grant?
Okay. Just under section two, waste disposal, uh, just, uh, sort of a new thing, I'm not sure if it's, it's useful for you or not, but, uh, sort of a first quarter snapshot comparison from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, uh, fairly consistent to, in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Uh, we had one additional Saturday in, in the quarter in twenty nineteen, and a little additional revenue. I guess that the upcoming, uh, we, we did, uh, complete, uh, two, uh, annual report for, from data call and our recycling. And every two years, there's a, uh, a waste industry survey that we, we completed at the end of March. And the dates are attached for the upcoming spring leaf and brush pickup for, for Cardinal and, uh, Johnstown, New Exford and Spencerville. And what we've started, uh, the last couple of years is the transfer station will accept brush and leaf at no charge during the same month that we're doing the collection in the built-up areas. The hope is that maybe some of those residents in the built-up areas will take advantage in, at, at, at no cost and, and bring, uh, bring the brush and the leaf, uh, to, to the transfer stations.
Now, that would be, if I just underst- understand that you just said, that would be for the whole month of May?
Correct.
Wonderful.
Is that just on, like, Saturday or every day?
Through the chair, it would just be on Saturday, when the transfer station's open from, from eight to twelve.
Through the chair, if I could ask, uh, questions for just information for myself? I've had a couple of residents ask me, I believe it is the ninth of May and twenty-third of May you're picking up in Spencerville?
Through the chair, that is correct, ninth and twenty.
Questions would ask me, uh, for their leaves and stuff, can they put them in plastic bags, or do they have to be in paper bags?
Uh, as long as, if they're in clear plastic bags, they will be picked up, and they won't typically, as long as it's clear.
It's clear. They don't have to be paper.
It does not have to be paper. We prefer paper, but we, we will pick up clear plastic.
Prefer paper, but if they have clear plastic, they can bag it in clear plastic.
Correct.
But it doesn't have to be the township clear?
That, that is correct. It does not have to be. What it is, is to, to ensure that we're not picking up residential household garbage, uh, at, at that time, because they're, they're emptied at the site and.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is the first time there was no punch cards at the, the landfill site. Didn't have to sell one there. Is it finally called on now?
I, 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 I'm optimistic that, that we're, we're close to reaching that, uh, that time. You know, there, there may be an occasion where there's a, sort of what we would consider an emergency, uh, event where somebody comes that we may be able to, to deal with, but hopefully, the message is out, they're, they're accessible, relatively easily accessible, and seems to be working well.
I'd just ask one more question on that aspect. We've been running these punch cards now for about two years, three years? Has our revenue increased any since we started the punch cards and before, when we were dealing with cash?
Through, through, through the chair, uh, I, I would say that the revenue end is probably relatively, uh, constant. However, when we started the, the punch card system, we had just, um, converted, at around the same time, to a transfer station from the, from the landfill, um, so, um.
Hard to really determine.
It, it's, it, I, I think it's more of an apples and oranges than, than an apple-to-apple comparison.
Um, I, I, I just have, uh, I, I actually just have one comment and one request. Um, I see in one point three, under miscellaneous items, that the Christmas tree, uh, pickup in, in the built-up zones. Uh, my first question is, um, what, what do you do with those trees? Is there a, is there a?
Through, through.
I believe there used to be a bond buyer or something.
Through, through the chair, correct, a couple, uh, but not for the last couple of years, there has not been, so it's typically taken to the, to the transfer station and, uh, and burned.
Now, my, my next question, um, is, I wonder if you could perhaps direct the boys, uh, when they're driving past the seven-thirty truck stop, to stop and pick up the Christmas tree in the ditch that's been there since January?
Through, through the chair, I'll, I'll attempt, but I, I wouldn't want to take away from the county responsibility.
You're so right. And you just passed the test.
Turn, turn to your left and make the request.
It falls on deaf ears here.
Anyway, thank you, uh, thank you for the, for the report. So you obviously knew it was there.
Oh, no, I don't think you did.
No? Okay, move, moving along, uh.
Section three of this report.
Section three?
Yep.
You would like to make a comment?
No, I just, well, I guess the only comment that I would make about section three is that, from my reading of it, all of the parameters are below the compliance levels.
Through, through the chair, the, the only part that I will, uh, note is under, uh, three point one. You'll note that we had a high HPC, or heterotrophic plate count, sample, uh, result at the, at the water treatment, uh, plant in March. Uh, no regulatory requirement to re-sample, but just that our internal protocol is that we, we re-sample right away, and, uh, results are good, and no, no further action was required.
Any other questions? Concerns? Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay, moving on to seven D, Ontario One Call Alternate Locate Agreements. And this has been updated, as you will notice that, uh, page two, uh, has been added to the, uh, to, to the, I believe that was the only, uh, the only update, uh, and we all did get a notification by email that, uh, that was coming. Now, any questions, any concerns here?
Excuse me.
So through the chair, I, I don't understand what's happening here. Can, can I get a, a layman's explanation of what's happening here?
Sure. Through, through, through the chair, uh, typically, what, what happens, uh, if there, if there's going to be any kind of, uh, digging, any kind of work in that nature, uh, everything goes through Ontario One Call, and it goes through a, uh, a typi- a typical locate request, and, uh, in, unless it's, uh, emergency or priority in nature, it sort of goes into the, uh, into the queue, and it's, it's typically, um, ten working days, um, before, uh, the, the, the locates are, are required to be completed. So what, what, um, Ontario One Call has, has come up with is, uh, this alternative locate agreement, where in situations where there is very low risk to damage to, to underground infrastructure, um, for, uh, work such as, um, uh, digging, hand, hand digging one foot a, a, around, you know, a bell structure, uh, that it would, they, they would not need to necessarily go through the same Ontario One Call program. They would call in, they would give their specified code, it would come directly to us, and we would just send an email giving them the clearance to, to move forward. So it streamlines that a little bit in, in the delay, uh, for, for the contractors, and it, it provides us at least the same degree of protection that we previously had through the standardized, uh, protocol, and, and doesn't, uh, require us to, to go and do our, our markings.
So, uh, the sample that I see in, in front of me is with Bell. So are we just entering into this new agreement with, just with Bell?
Chair, that is correct. So it would, it would be individual agreements with a particular contractor if they approached the, the municipality.
So has Bell approached us?
That is correct. Bell has approached us.
So we have a situation where Bell wants to dig by hand, no deeper than twelve inches.
Uh, I, I'm not sure if the, it, did it specify twelve inches? I, I, I'm just, I'm using that as, as an example.
It says all excavations will be conducted.
Yes.
By hand-operated equipment comprised of hand digging without the use of pneumatic hand tools, and not exceed a maximum depth of twelve inches.
Correct.
So if Bell is doing the digging.
Correct.
Not less, not by hand, not more than twelve inches, they wouldn't be damaging our property, they might damage their own.
Correct. So what we're giving them is clearance, because typically, whether they're digging six inches, twelve inches, or nine feet.
They need to locate.
They need to locate.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yes. So, so really, what this does is streamline that process, where, where they're, they're not going to be anywhere near our infrastructure, our underground infrastructure, that we can, we, we can give them the go-ahead.
So who will administer this? Your office?
Uh, it will be through Environmental Services, that they, they will, they will get that request, and, uh, Environmental Services will monitor that.
Okay. That clears it up in my head, I guess.
Yes, Counsel?
Um, you're just not going to, uh, where the chair, thank you. Mr. Grant, you're just not going to say, uh, Bell calls you on Sappaya Street, uh, they want to dig, you're not just supposed to, yeah, go ahead, because you got gas and hydro and?
So, 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 so through, through the chair, that?
I can see Glenn Smell Road saying, yeah, go ahead.
So, so, so through the chair, that, it, it is where, uh, water and, and sewer infrastructure exists, is what we would get notification for. Um, Union Gas or Enbridge now, I guess, would be, would get, would get the locate request for, for natural gas. We, we, we don't have any authority to, uh, give, um, a contractor, um, authorization to, to, to dig, other than we're, we're marking where our infrastructure is. They have to get every other utilities, uh, markings together before they can dig.
So it's just their own, it, Bell, it'd be just their own that they're going to be digging, or damaging?
No, it's ours.
What? Um, yeah, so, I, I, I guess what it is, i- if, if Bell has a damaged cable that they need to repair, that's, that's buried twelve inches un- un- under the ground, that?
Glenn Smell Road.
Sorry?
Glenn Smell Road.
Uh, if it's, if it's Glenn Smell Road, we're giving them, we're giving them clearance.
Yeah.
Because we have no underground infrastructure. So if it's in Spencerville, at that location, basically, it goes into Ontario One Call, it has a special code that would be contained within our agreement. That code automatically gets it shipped to Environmental Services, and we say, yes, you can go ahead in this location, we don't have anything special. We fax that off to them, or email it off to them, and they can proceed. So they can get that repair done in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, because it's not an emergency dig.
Yeah.
They've real, they've really cut down on what constitutes an emergency dig. Um, so.
Any other questions? Okay, we do have a recommendation. Recommendation, that committee recommends that council, number one, authorize the staff to establish alternate locate protocols within, with contractors on a case-by-case basis, where potential infrastructure damage at risk are low, and, two, authorize staff to execute the required agreement documents. Do I have a mover? Counselor Hunter, the second there? Counselor Dillabon? All in favor? Corey? Thank you, Scott. Okay, the next one is, uh, the Gallup Canal Bridge railing replacement, and, uh, this is the, uh, the tender that has come in, and there are, there is two recommenda- there is a recommendation with two, two, uh, portions to it, and you also have, uh, the Keystone Bridge Management Corporation letter, as well as a copy of the tenders which have been scrutinized. Um, I have just one question, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble matching the numbers. It says, uh, just above the recommendation, so it'd be the last paragraph above the recommendation, the low total tended price, including non-reviable HST, is ninety-seven, six forty-eight, point five oh. Now, for some reason, I can't find that on any of these tenders. Can I get an explanation as to those numbers?
Certainly, through, through, through the chair. Uh, the, the township, uh, out of the thirteen percent HST is only required to pay, uh, twenty-two percent of the, uh, pretend, uh, provincial portion.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's why the, the, the number is a lot lower than the, than the thirteen percent HST noted in the, in the tenders.
Okay, that's why I didn't add up. And then we have an engineering and contract administration of ten thousand to be added in, and then, of course, the contingency of ten thousand to be added in, to a total of one seventeen, four sixty-eight, fifty. Now, the contingency is for, just correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is for work that we don't see that may come up as the project goes, goes on, is, is that correct?
Through the chair, correct. That's something that, that's unforeseen, that arises during, uh, the, the project. The hope is always that, uh, that contingency doesn't get used.
Okay, and then we've got another ten thousand for engineering and contract administration. Now, is that for an outside, um, engineer to, to oversee the, um, to oversee the, the work that goes on, to make sure everything is done properly?
That is, that is correct, Mr. Chair. That is for Keystone Bridge Management Corporation to, to perform the inspections and, and perform the contract administration to the project.
Okay, I appreciate it being broken down that way. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Dillabon?
Uh, do we have a natural contract, uh, Mr. Grant, of the Engineering Contract Administration? A natural contract?
Sorry, through the chair.
Well, we have ninety-seven thousand, four and sixty-eight is, is a tender, we know that.
Correct.
This engineering contract administration, do we have something written that it is ten thousand, or is it six thousand, is it seven thousand? How do we, how do we get to this ten thousand?
Uh, through, 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 through the chair, from, from, from conversations and, uh, emails with the, uh, with the, the engineer from Bridge Corps Management.
But we don't have a natural?
I do, I, I do not, I, I do not have a nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar quote. I do not.
So, so just through the chair, so for engineering and contract administration, that's on a per-hour basis, is it not?
Uh, typ- typically it is.
Yeah, so they quote you a per-hour rate?
Typically, they do.
Okay. Right, and so then, second question?
Go ahead.
So the contingencies at the ten thousand, do they come to you by means of a change order?
Uh, through the chair, they would typically come through a change order.
Okay, so then, so you've got a document?
That's correct. Signed by the, uh, the, the engineer, signed by the contractor, and then signed off by myself.
Okay, so then, basically, what's happening is that we've delegated you the, the responsibility to approve change orders up to ten thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we get a report of those change orders, how many were issued? I think on the last couple of contracts, if I recall correctly, and Walker Street is one, you had a contingency allowance, but if I recall, the last report, we had, there hadn't been any change orders. Is that correct? Do I remember that correctly? As of the cessation of operations last fall?
Through, through the chair, there, there may very well have been one, one change order.
Right towards the end?
Uh, towards, towards the end. Um, so I'll have to, uh.
Any further questions? Okay, we do have a.
Vote.
We do have a, uh, a recommendation. I have a mover from Mayor Seo. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Crawford called a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Thank you. Municipal smoking policy. You've all had a chance to read the covering letter. There also is a recommendation on this. And I was extremely glad to see in the body of the bylaw that the district health unit inspectors are responsible for enforcing the Smoke Free Ontario Act. Questions?
So, Mr. Chair, I don't like to be picky, but there's two little errors that I'd like to see corrected. So on the first page, one, I'm going down the whereas clauses. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eighth whereas clause, beginning of the fourth line, it should be extent, E-X-T-E-N-T, instead of with a D. And then, the next one is on the last page, the signature page, at ten point one, where a provision of this bylaw, the L is missing, little thing, but, and I apologize for bringing those up. I should have brought them up to staff quietly and I just didn't have time today. But I'm impressed with the extent of this bylaw. It really is quite comprehensive. I'm really impressed with the definitions that are provided in it. And I'm also impressed with the work that staff has done with the health unit to see how this thing can actually be operationalized. And I think, I think we have a really good bylaw here that is going to be workable and is going to send a very clear message, you know, that we want our parks kept free, we want our buildings kept free of smoking or vaping. And I think those things are spelled out in very good detail, so I'm really happy to see this coming forward.
It's a good bylaw.
I'd be happy to move the recommendation when we get to that point in time.
Any other questions at the table? Mr. Counselor?
I just heard one question under, it says about fines may be levied in obstruction by the, doesn't say any costs or anything. Does the health unit have a set rate, a fine per, or...
I defer to the deputy clerk on that one. This is totally her project.
Through the chair, with reviewing with the health inspectors, they have a set fine schedule within the provincial bylaw, not provincial bylaw, sorry, the provincial act for the Smoke Free Ontario. And that goes through the Provincial Offenses Act. So it ranges between two to around five hundred dollars to start with. They're clearly heavy fines, even for first offenses.
Good. So that's a question to that. I know under one of the Ontario Acts that I put there, the township's parking bylaws and fines and stuff, we're supposed to start getting our fines money turned over. Over there is, these fines here that are collected, do the townships get part of that money back?
We do, correct. Yes. It is a slow process to be remitted to us, but they assure us we would get a portion of it.
But just, to the chair, if I may, I wish I would have brought the briefing note from the last county council meeting. Cannot believe the volume of outstanding fines that we are unable to collect. It's phenomenal. We're up around twelve million dollars. And it's, you know, it's really bad. But if I may, Mr. Chair, picking up on Counselor Hunter's question, is the set fine schedule that the health unit would apply, does that set fine schedule become part of this bylaw?
No, it does not.
It doesn't. So how do we communicate to our taxpayers that are subject to this bylaw what the set fines will be for breaches of the bylaw?
If I may, through the chair, we are required to put up some signage around the township in various places. And certainly, that's the spot at which we say contraventions may be subject to set fines under provincial legislation of X dollars, however much it is. It's a range, so that's how we can convey it to the residents, is through signage.
It's not necessary for the schedule to be attached?
We have no, we have no enforcement.
Okay.
Through the chair, I might add, if you went in pretty near all the rinks in Ottawa, community centers, when you walk in gently, just shortly inside the door, there's a steel sign on the state's bylaw number and fine acquisition on there.
For smoke.
Yeah.
All right, am I hearing anything else? I have a mover with Mayor Seo. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Hunter. Recommendation is that committee recommends that council adopt municipal smoking policy as attached. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And it brings us to our final item, which is the Public Works Greater Repairs. And I believe this is just an information item here for us. And who would be speaking to this?
Just briefly, we did issue an email with respect to the greater repairs a week or so ago and had promised at that point to bring a more inclusive report to committees. That's all we do.
Thank you. I just have one question, if I may, and I'm just, it's a curiosity question that the one item was brought to the attention by one of our employees. May I just ask, and perhaps if you know, you could answer the question, what alerted him to the, to the, what alerted the operator that was probably...
So through the chair, probably a week or so prior to where the operator shut down the unit, he could hear a slight noise change. So we had, we had strong go-out, they looked over everything, they drove a little bit, and our operator saying, you not, can you not hear that? And it was like, no, I'm not hearing anything. And he says, well, it's not sounding exactly, exactly right. And sure enough, four days in, that noise changed again and it was like, shut it down and that's it. So I think it's really a combination of seat time combined with really having a good sense of how that unit should sound in different aspects. So full credit, that saved us extensive repair costs, I would anticipate.
Yeah, full credit, for sure, for sure. And of course, once he heard that minor sound, first of all, he would be attuned to listen thereon. So excellent, 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 excellent. Any comments?
One question. It says that the budget for the year is eighteen thousand, but do they cost already, that's just shy of seven? So that's going to put over budget for the greater repairs now with the way funds transferred for the, what's going over budget? The annual budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the direction from council, Mr. Crawford, is that if the overall department goes over budget, we're required to come back and change the budget, but line items within the budget, hopefully we have some offsetting savings somewhere else.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is that it? Yes, Mr. Dillabon?
Just curiosity, what's the rental from Ken Miller's excavator? The rental of that grader that we had?
Through the chair, it's based on the hour meter and it's a hundred and ten dollars an hour.
Just hour meter and a one-ten? That's included in the float, floating charges too, or floating charges on top of that?
Floating charges would be on top of that.
Anything else? Good. So that brings us to council inquiries and notices of motion. And I'd just like to mention that the next public works meeting will not be held on the Monday, a month from today. It will be held on the Tuesday because, of course, the Monday is the Victoria holiday. So our next meeting will be the following day, which is the Tuesday. Anything else? Hearing nothing, then we'll move on to the mayor's report.
So a couple of things to report. First of all, earlier today, I was in email conversation with Lee Whitely from Ingredian. And he informs me that the deal for Benson School will close this Thursday. And he points out to me that once Ingredian has taken possession of that property, they intend to fence the entire property as a security matter. And they're going to fence not only the property on the south side of the street, which is where the school is, my understanding is they will fence as well the parking lot on the north side of the street as well. That's my understanding. There will probably be a little bit of conversation about that because I think that there are a number of folks that use the parking lot on the north side of the street for personal use, even though it is school board property. So that just brings you up to date. Now, something else, a little district, in case the rest of the council didn't hear it, someone asked him tonight if there were any plans for that property and it might have been Brian, I can't remember, but it was, oh yes, it was Counselor Dillabon. And his answer was, no, there are no immediate plans for that property at this point in time. That's the first thing. Second thing I wanted to report is that Mayor Malanka and I did attend in Kingston on Saturday to hear the Queen's team, and this is the team of engineering students, five engineering students, make their presentation of their, you could call it a dissertation, soybean processing for world markets. And the actual report itself that they have prepared is about this thick. What I picked up from the presentation was just this PowerPoint presentation, but these students have done a really remarkable job of researching the concept of introducing a soybean processing plant in eastern Ontario. Now, there are some gaps in the study, I will admit. And one of the most notable gaps, which no fault of their own, is that there is a soybean processing plant in Winchester. And it seems to be a relatively modest operation, but he would not allow them to view his operation, nor would he speak to them. And, which leads me to believe that the market may not be quite as robust as these students have portrayed it to be. But nevertheless, still an interesting study. Now, I'm going to try to get permission to use this, but the intellectual property does not remain with the students and I have to get permission from the owner of the intellectual property. The other thing I just wanted to report briefly is that this report has just been released. And this is the report that was commissioned by the city of Brockville as a result of the closure of the Procter and Gamble plant, which is scheduled to make its final closure in 2020. And so because there were so many folks being laid off and put out of work and because it was going to have such an effect across the whole region, Brockville applied to the provincial government for a communities in transition grant. And the community in transition grant, somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars, came directly to Brockville and Brockville commissioned this report to kind of try to point a way forward to mitigate the effects of the closure of the Procter and Gamble plant. So that study's available also. And I find it pretty tough reading. As you can see, I'm nowhere near all the way through it yet. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of bring you up to date with a few things. And then lastly, just to remind everybody of the port meeting on Wednesday night, looks like a very interesting meeting coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to question period. Oh, no questions from the audience. But I do, I just have one question for staff and I'm sure I know the answer to it, but you will be notifying Mr. Porter of his decision made. Thank you. We have no closed session. So adjournment, I'm looking for a mover. Mr. Packwood, seconder. Mr. Counselor Dillabon, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.